Educating, informing, serving. Fact TV, keeping government honest. You're watching a Fact TV presentation of the Westminster School Board meeting.
So it is six o'clock and let's call the, I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Westminster School Board at the Westminster Center School. Again, six o'clock on Thursday, November 16th. And our first order of business is actually just a few introductions around the table. We do this particularly because Fact TV records and some of the public may not know who everyone is. And so Nicole, for a rare treat for us, please introduce yourself.
Nicole Barnett, Admin Assistant to the Superintendent and Board Recorder.
Jim Vazina helping out in finance.
Let's hardly cancel lessons for the rest of the evening. Team Bealsey, Westminster School Board. Cheryl Charles, Chair of the Westminster School Board. Karen Blanchard, Westminster School Board.
Andrew Cunningham, Southern Vermont Solar.
Margie Snuckett, I've been seeing her in there.
Margie Ferry, Westminster School Board.
I guess I'm Andy Haas, the Superintendent, and Charlie's right on time, so.
Just introduce yourself.
Just follow.
Man, I'm down now.
Yes.
Yeah. Hi, I'm Charlie Hudson, the Vice Chair of the Westminster School Board.
Perfect. All right. Thank you so much. Let's see if there are any notifications and public comments, and we hear that there are none. Don't see folks lining up to make comments tonight, which is fine. As always, again, I want to thank Fact TV for being here this forward evening for the public. We appreciate them. Our next item of business is to review and approve minutes from October. It was not the 18th, what was it? October 5th. And so I entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from October 5th. You're really slow on the go today, Charlie.
Thank you.
There's a motion on the floor too.
Review and approve the minutes from October 5th. Are there, is there any discussion? Are there any corrections? I think not. All right. And all of us are in the room, so we can simply have a vote. For all those in favor of approving the minutes, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Thank you. The minutes are approved. I miss, I sailed right across adjustments to the agenda. I'd like to go back to that because I actually do have some adjustments to propose. And then that would be that I think that under reports, it would be helpful to have a staff presentation on Kuwaiten first. So that our faculty person can get on with other things this evening. We really appreciate your being here.
No problem. You can stay for the finance report. That was awesome.
And then I'd also like to propose that we move the new business for discussion and action, which is review and approval of policies. I'd like to move that down under old business so that it's out of that. And then one additional recommendation, given we have a colleague and guest from Southern Vermont Solar here. Under old and then finished business, I'd like to move the solar project up to the first item. From there, Andrew Cunningham needs to be by 7:15. So we would hope to get them to allow you to reportedly with us. So with that, with those adjustments, are those all okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, all right. Everybody has agreed with that. And that means we're up for a staff presentation. Do you want to make any introductory remarks?
Sure. We have Madden Sullivan here. She is our sixth grade teacher. This is her second year teaching in our second year at Westminster Center School. She took our 21 sixth graders to Can't Keep Waitin' this fall, earlier this fall. They had a wonderful week and it is something that is funded for our local budget, which is truly amazing. So we thought it would be helpful, especially during budget season, to share a video of the experience. We are thrilled to have Madden on our staff. A real energy and an ability to connect with students in a way that is very special and kind of unteachable. You know, that kind of part of teaching that you can't teach. So yeah, anything you want to share about Kuwaiten?
I mean, it's such a, I like, I don't think of it as like a chore or anything to go. I look forward to it every year because it's just such an amazing opportunity and it grows. It creates this sense of community that something that a classroom just never can. And I get to know the kids outside of school. And we're just getting to know each other and building just such a solid foundation that transfers through the rest of the year. And I mean, yes, there's really great academic pieces in the career. There's all these like amazing, remember environmental sciences, human impact, which is in itself fantastic. But then also like you're in the woods or hiking, you're like, it hands on, like you're doing learning past seven o'clock, you know? And it's like, we have a bonfire and it's just, it's incredible. And I don't know, like nowadays the kids aren't sleeping over at friends' houses anymore. It's like, it's like, you know, COVID really impacted that. So a lot of these kids actually have never been away from their parents for longer than a night. And they've never done it and let them on two nights. So it's for students to be exposed to that and know that they can persevere and push through and challenge themselves. And then be able to come home on Friday and be like, wow, I just did that. I mean, I can't, I can't teach that. And that's something that they learn for themselves. And just to watch these kids grow, it's just absolutely incredible, just from when they were on Monday to then on Friday. And then these kids coming back to school, some of them are completely different. And it's, it's incredible. Like it, I'm. It almost brings me to tears just how amazing this program is.
We know on a classroom wins.
Yeah.
Go ahead and play it.
Yeah.
All right. See if I can actually do this.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was on the, when the cabin was supposed to be cleaned and you're supposed to be hanging on the bus. It's well, under the bed, it's a nice one.
So Madden, you're open to questions.
Absolutely.
Anybody having?
How many kids were on this?
So Westminster, we had 15 kids, 19 of our 21 though. And then there was also, I think school went and Grandma's will join us, staying at least with us. So, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And who else from Westminster went?
Kim Buzznay.
Yeah.
Yeah. And that was it. It was Kim. Janelle ended up driving up on Thursday with, there were three students that did not come for the, for the nights. And they came, sorry, so 15 of us went.
Kuwaiten has a whole staff.
Yeah.
So it's fully staffed via under educators. We said.
And remind us, how many days, how many nights?
It's five days with a Monday, Friday, and then four nights. Fantastic. Oh, it's incredible. Yeah.
Yeah, no, thank you for doing it. It was really awesome. It looks like you're in great weather too.
Oh, yeah. It was incredible. The week before it was cold and raining. And then the week after we went, it was cold and raining and it was 80 degrees there, which is like, we got to go swimming. Like we were practicing and it was beautiful. It was just perfect. I mean, it was perfect the entire week.
My, my daughter went. She was the wallflower that you saw popping up. And but, you know, she does not like be uncomfortable. She does not like to get dirty really or do things that she doesn't want to do. But she came home and she talked all about the learning, like she couldn't stop talking about the impact. Like, and like the water cycle. Like that's what she wanted to talk about when she got home. But I wanted to be like, how was the food? I want to know about the basics. And she's like, well, did you know? You know, and that's all she wanted to talk about, which was great. Yeah, we were talking about this and I didn't expect it.
Yeah. I mean, they have a great way to teach it too, right? It's all outdoors. Like we're not in a classroom learning about it. Like we are, if anything, we'll sit down for five, 10 minutes. Just go over some basic definitions and then we'll walk to our next location in the woods. So we're constantly moving and we're constantly getting up going around. It's just such a great way to learn, especially.
How many staff were, are there?
You, I think, they rotate. So we have one cabin staff that sleeps in the cabin with us. And they're kind of responsible for getting everyone up in the morning. There, there's Tim who heads the entire program and then he has an assistant. And then there's, depending on how many students there are, there, every group of seven kids, kids get broken up to seven. There has to be two adults. So whether it be, it has to at least be one chief staff and then usually an additional staff or one of us will go. There's, he's, I want to say 20 or something, but.
That's great. Yeah. And I think Kuwaiten really tries to make it affordable for schools, like for schools to send kids to. If you, if you send your kids to Kuwaiten in the summertime, that's not, the price difference is like astronomical. It is much different. So.
Five thousand bucks a week.
Yeah. They, yeah, they really do tremendous service for them.
And whereas we can see all of the community building, you know, spree building, all of that kind of stuff that came through. So clearly, talk a little more about the curriculum connections. We just heard a little bit about them.
Yeah, so it direct, it connects directly to the Vermont standards. So it teaches, you know, water cycle, air cycle, soil cycle and human impact. So throughout the entire week, we are going on investigations. So we're one in the morning and then one in the afternoon. The afternoon, noon, morning doesn't end until 4:30, so even after school hour then. So they're learning well into the day. And it's about an hour and a half investigation and they're going to different locations. And for example, the wetlands that you saw where some of this, one of these students was in tech deep in. There, they're learning about soil cycle, the deep, like decomposing of like plants and bugs and all of these nasty things, you know? We learned about stumps and all, all the, how it plays into the environment and the. My, uh, biosphere.
Ecosystem system. Thank you.
Yeah. And then at the end, on the last day, we, or the night before, we are practicing skits through every group to present to, and our final campfire to the entire group of one of the cycles. And then on the last day there, there's a huge game called the Predator Press Simulation Game, where they're learning about the food chain. So it's, I mean, I could go into, I love this game so much again, but yeah.
I like to play.
Yeah. So at the end of the game, they introduce a human and the human is like, if you see it, if you see a person, they point and you're out. So they're like, they learn like, that wasn't fair. And you're like, well, that's human impact. It's like, yeah, so it, it all ties together and it all like, you know, it's really just a fantastic way to deploy.
I say, do kids keep a journal?
Yes.
Like, so there's a writing component that also goes.
Yeah.
That whole thing, so.
Yeah. Do the kids come back and share it with the rest of the school? Yeah, so we did, the Friday, the week after we came back, we were at an all school meeting. And we were able to share the video. Every kid went up and presented something that they enjoyed about Kuwaiten. Those all the kids were like jazz, first graders were like.
Yeah.
Yeah. Five more years, you know?
Any other? Well, we're thrilled. Thank you, Madden.
Come back and see the board another time.
Thank you. So with that, let's move into the finance report. And I think that's going to lead into business report this week. So go ahead, Jim.
Okay. I'll just reference on the, on the financial report, you'll see where I circled some items. I made a note later then. And again, those, those are the problems that we've got to fix. I think with the worker comp. It's, it's throughout. It's not. And Erica, our accountant, is working with somebody at Tyler as to why it's not encumbering entirely the worker comp. So just on, on page two, you'll see where I've circled the assessment for surplus. Well, we can't mix revenue with expenditures. And this has to be removed and put in its right place. So. Why it's an issue is, you know, and again, I think this is critical. You're, so you're, you're 300,000 overstating what you show as a balance. So we just want to make sure that you can refer, you know, to the correct numbers. I mean, if you look at, at this 1,695, really, you're 300,000 less. And on the last, next to the last page, page nine, that, that 1.9 million, and I'm looking under the budget balance, is really 1.6. So we certainly want to fix those items. So anything that's circled, it's, it's not encumbering and shouldn't be. I'm looking at page three, and this is in regard to the guidance teacher. These items should all be encumbering a certain amount, but they're not. On page four, similarly. Okay. And I just want to make sure that it's on the bottom right where the page number is. I'm on page five and you'll see over on the left-hand side, there's a couple of miscoding which, which has to be fixed. And you can say, well, gee, they showed us the same thing last time. That may be, but I just want to tell you, our accounting team has been trying to get the quality stuff done because the auditors were in this week, they'll be in next week. And hopefully you'll have an audit report the first of December. So, and that would be awesome to have from last year's balance. So you'll know exactly where you are and we'll be able to publish, publish in the end or report your audit. And I think it'll, it'll come together. I, I don't think I have any other thing. The last page, the very last page in the packet deals with revenue. I think you're right on track for all of your revenues that were budgeted. Don't see any issue at all. And again, I'll just note to you, bank interest, we were guessing 4,000 right now, $200. So. We'll keep adding to that next. Again, accounting staff have been really pranking away with the auditors. So.
It's the first line, the West Town Taxes, it will zero. Why is that?
Here on page.
Yes. So Charlie, that, that shouldn't be in there. And the only reason I say that, if you look at three lines down, that 3110 is the head spending grant. And then your taxes, your town taxes are the bottom, which are 2,678. So that top line shouldn't be in there. And I think that was miscoding.
This is budget today, one of our biggest issues right now in trying to plan for the 2025. But we need to be able to take to the voters. So can we transition to that? And Liz, might that be the first part of your report?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I shared a budget overview. Our student population next year will be basically the same. We'll be tuitioning less students in middle school. But we'll see a decrease in our tuition amount that we'll be paying. We have a few less preschools, so we, we project to be tuitioning 5. I'm expecting the same amount of classrooms, 12 classroom teachers. The essentials, I would like to keep the same and the same. FY. I mean. Yeah, FY '25, but in the same full-time enrollment or the full-time or .8. The only difference is right now we have three academic interventionists. One is currently paid through SER. And over the past five years, our district has received less and less Title I funding. So we've no longer absorbed that staff member or that position in, through Title I. So I would like to have a locally funded academic interventionist through our local budget. So that would be an addition. And another addition I would like to make is another position in our school that is funded through SER is our Reconnect program. So she is, or that position, deals are, teaches specific pro-social skills to specific students on specific behavioral need. She, that position allows students to process their behavior, own their part in their behavior and repair harm that everything has been caused. So that position just allows time and space for. Then very beneficial for our students to have that and for our staff to have. So that would, those would be the interventions. Be the academic interventionist and the, I put an SEL interventionist, I'm not sure what we're calling it. And then capital improvements for next year. We are hoping to look into remodeling our, the two oldest bathrooms, which are on the K-1 hallway. Those are in, those, they are, they're really in rough shape. So we're looking at different funding sources. Numbers or what that might look like. But they are, at this point, they're not ADA compliant. So that would be. And in technology, there's no real upgrade that we're, that Ricky is seeing for next year. We have computers for our staff as yesterday. Our, all classrooms have our meeting boards and we're just moving into the platforms that we were introduced this year, like for tracking active data.
But the interventionist, so we're, we're keeping the two that are fully SRE funded.
So there's two that are Title I.
Title I.
Title I, yes. So keeping those.
So we'll have three total.
Yeah, so we'll have three total, yeah, three total academic interventionists. And one just being locally funded in that SEL.
Joe, I unpacked it a little bit.
Yes, please.
So in title, title is a formula for how we can distribute our funds. It's, it's based on student population, student needs and things like that. So there's this formula, you have to plug it in, you have to, you know, you have to equalize it out a little bit. So it's an SUY piece, so it's. I don't want to, like, you're competing in some ways with other schools, right, within our SU for, for the dollars that we get in. You mix in the SER for year, typically in title, you can carry over any excess funds that you didn't spend one time every three years. But because of SER and some other things, the federal government allowed us to roll over dollars for years. So we were rolling over large amounts of dollars, like half a million dollars, which is why we were able to hold certain positions for years, even with SER funds. And we're no longer able to carry over those funds. And as, as Liz accurately reported, over the last four years, we've gotten about half a million dollars less in title. So we've been kind of keeping up on our title with this carryover funds that we've had for many years that we no longer have. And then we have the SER clip, which, so. So when we went back and retooled and looked at, looked at what SER, or not, I mean, what title could provide, it couldn't, it couldn't absorb those SER funded positions. So that's why when we talked with all of our principals was, you know, they felt there's still this need to support kids academically, but also to support kids in that social, emotional learning piece. And so that's why that ask is coming.
Not me, but I need to access.
We are all, we are a whole school.
Yeah.
All, well, whole district, you know, I don't think about it that way. So all students have access to title. Interesting.
And then. No, I do special ed. But the nice thing now is that, yeah, again, the nice thing now too is that academic support teachers can do special, can do special education services. So which helps to like, make it so that you can access more, you can be more flexible with accessing more student need because you're not siloed into wanting to have a toward a lecture. So you can be more flexible with schedules.
Yeah, we actually just, we're having a meeting about that prior to this.
It's about 500 revisions of the year, so I did.
To this topic for a minute though, you just said that we have reduced funding from our title. We've got one base. SER disappears, but you, you haven't yet addressed the reduction in our grant that supports special education.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah. So, so on top of that, when. Oh, yeah, sorry, yeah, so so on top of that, um, when um, as well, two thousand nineteen, um, when Act one seventy-three passed, yeah, it moved, uh, projected to move us away from a reimbursement grant. Uh, so we used to get reimbursed at a percentage of every student who was on an I E P, we got reimbursed a certain percentage of their costs. Uh, but uh, let's say fifty-six percent or somewhere around that, I think was the the final number. It moved us to a a census block grant that's based on long-term membership. And it's not our current long-term membership, it's an average of three years in the past of kind of membership. And so um, the the idea there is based on that long-term membership, and it's all students, not just your special education students, but all your students. The state has said, we believe you get X number of dollars per student. So here's a chunk of money, and if you need to spend more, that comes out of your local. If you don't need to spend all that money, then you can use those dollars for all students. So we unfortunately are not in the um, advantageous spot of of having extra money to spend on students. We're actually in other, uh, we have a high student needs population across the S U. Um, this year we got in on top of what we had already lost ninety thousand dollars with a an accounting error at the state. And they are telling us next year we will get about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars less for special education. Where that impacts you, your local, is it impacts you in your assessment from the S U because we still need to provide the services that are that are legally required to students. Um, no matter what the costs are, so if the grant doesn't cover that cost, we have to cover it both. And so therefore that increased that. I think uh, Jim, for over a million dollars total, um, increase in special education because
Yes.
there's an increased cost with students on the district. Um, and then this three hundred fifty thousand dollar shortfall, that has to get passed on to the.
Is there a, yeah, three hundred billion dollar deficit and shortfall, whether you just said there's gonna be a shortfall of a million dollars, I think you said.
No, no, so so special education was an increase for next year of over a million dollars total. But we're getting three hundred, what would have offset that was if we, not net three hundred, we wouldn't have that high increase. But because you have an increase in your costs in special education for next year, and you're getting less money, so your assessment's gonna be bigger.
That would be reflected in the budget group net right now.
Yes.
Yeah.
And it's one of the special education teachers here, is that that's, we're a district program, right?
Correct, there is a, there is a district classroom here, yeah, programs.
So that's paid for proportionally by those second measures, right? It doesn't.
And these are sort of all things that we will know in advance that we can account for in a budget.
It's in there right now.
Yes.
It's in, it's in this budget right now, you go, so Jim's already projected those numbers, so.
Okay. So a couple of things, there is a finance committee for the Wyndham Norte Supervisory Union that's been meeting regularly, looking at all of this to dive in, especially the implications for the assessment that each of you know, we're supposed to forget. And we're looking at double digits for every single district, it's more than twenty percent increase for Westminster, for example. Um, that committee will meet again on November twenty-eighth, I think it's then.
Right.
That's correct.
That's right, yes.
Next one, Tuesday, I believe. Uh, and I think at that committee meeting, we're close enough with everything Andy has done, and Jim has done, and this committee has worked through that we'll be able to come back with a final proposed, even though it won't have been approved yet by the issue board. We'll still have a working number that we can use for our budget planning here. I I just would say that we, I believe that we need to dive into the budget in more detail with Andy and Jim. We are not, we're not deciding anything tonight, we're just trying to get information and keep looking at it closely. And come up with your questions, we need to understand the point. But um, that's kind of the big picture of where we're headed. I think the S U board is gonna try to improve the budget that would put in place our assessment on December seventh.
Six.
Six.
I believe, yeah.
Oh, you're right, because this board meets again on the seventh, thank you. Um, so we're moving along, everything is moving, but there just are so many implications.
I I think overall, the S U budget is looking at a little over six and a half percent increase totals right now. Uh, but if, um, and so we're we're still trying to work on those numbers, hopefully we'll be able to um, pull some of that down a little bit, but um, I mean, there are, there are, if if you think of the interventionists that we've had in the different buildings um, and some of the positions we've had at the S U and whatnot, uh, there's a considerable number of positions that we are unable to fund uh, moving forward at the S U level, so. We're we're all made, we're the real position we're really trying to hold on to right now is Shelley Wilson, uh, who is our director of Student and Family Services, M P S S. Um, so, um, because we we're building a system, the the whole point there is to build a system to support students in regular education to help to stop that increase in special education. So it's a, it's a it's a long-term investment, we know that, it's gonna take some time, but um, we're we are working for building that, that last, last year and this year we made more ground, um, we're just still catching up with this one.
Yeah.
So looking at page five of the budget, and there's an item, assess the allocation of the Fed. And it's a hundred fifty thousand increase. Is that the increase we're looking at at the moment, or are there other versions of it somewhere else? Apparently, I think, page five of the budget that um, that uh, that's uh, and uh.
This is, it may be a different page on the handout, so.
Yeah.
Do you have a number? Is there a number you're looking at, an object number?
Yes, the object number is five five nine three.
Five five nine three.
I'm saying that's three hundred and twenty-four, different five hundred and seventy-five.
Yes.
Is that, is that, is that the thing?
That's page, so it's page four in the handout. Sorry, that's what I wanted to get to, for page four. Um, it's it's in the the third block down, about halfway through that third block down, assess the allocation of Fed.
So, so Charlie, that's that, as Andy said, total cost increase is a million eighteen thousand. And it's the percentage, this four hundred and seventy-five represents the assessed percentage that Westminster would make up.
Listen, so the damage to Westminster budget is a hundred fifty thousand.
In that canopy.
In that canopy.
Right.
Correct.
That's. That's.
There isn't another item, line item somewhere else?
No.
No.
I I do have one question, um, actually specific to Weyden and winter activities. In the proposed budget that I see, they're missing. It is, I'm looking, this may not be the one that you said, it's one that um, Jim had the public days, it was page sixteen. And if um, in the D two.
I'm looking at page sixteen, line eighty, six one. I think it's under dues and fees for student activities, can we do?
Yes.
Oh, so you combine them into that, and that's why the next two lines, it looks like they're missing, but they're not, right?
Right.
Okay, I, that was just, it caught my attention, thank you. Perfect, all right. So um, I think we have a lot to look at, we have a lot to look at in terms also, um, even though we're holding steady in student population this year and next year. And we continue to have a drop in population, maybe an average of three percent a year for the last eight years. And it's a lot to look at and try to figure out.
I can pick up a guy, it's, it feels like we've lost seven thousand dollars because there was fifteen thousand for dues and fees and another seven thousand for Weyden, and now we've just got fifteen for students' fees and Weyden. And seven things disappeared.
Yeah, it's just been combined um, and more accurate to what we'll need for next year.
So we need that, thank you. Seven thousand less.
Yes.
So I'm I'm wondering, uh, if we want to have a special meeting to spend more time on the budget. Uh, yeah, so that's all we do. Okay, so let me explore timing with you all. Okay. Leah, you've got the rest of your report.
Other things, other than budget, um, other than budget. We um, have currently a hundred forty-five students enrolled, our average daily attendance for the past thirty days has been ninety-five percent. We wrapped up parent teacher conferences last week, we offered in-person Zoom on the phone. And this was a wonderful opportunity to rehabilitate the staff to connect and discuss goals for the year. Our safety drill in November was a secure drill, this is a drill where students and staff um, practice securing the perimeter of the building. Students and staff come inside if they were outside, and it's a really good mechanism in the building. This is one of the five different emergency response drills that we practice throughout the year, and our students and staff are really on it and are knowing what to do, which is helpful. Professional development next week, the next Monday and Tuesday, staff will engage in both building based and S U professional development. On Monday, we'll continue to work as a staff on our explicit instruction and student engagement. This is a year-long um, professional development that our staff is um, engaging in, we'll discuss our work through our professional learning communities and um, the S U tech department will also join us on Monday morning with the rest of the elementary schools. And we're beginning the transition to report cards through Power School. Currently, our report cards are written on Google Docs, um, which is very cumbersome, and um, the Power School report card will just streamline the process, and we hope to have our first Power School report card go out in January when the semester ends. As you may know, our harvest, annual harvest meeting tomorrow, it, doors will open at eleven o'clock. We were very busy today prepping, and the gym looks awesome, and it's really just a wonderful celebration of community. Students have a hand in really every aspect of the prep, from cutting the vegetables to putting up the tables and chairs, to setting the tables, making the decorations. Yeah, we really look forward to a great day. Um, and another thing to put on your calendar is our first annual WCS P T O trivia night at Fulpalo's on December second at six thirty. So get a team together, um, it's twenty-five dollars a person, the ticket includes an appetizer and entry trivia. Um, additional food and drink will be available for purchase. Um, our P T O group is responsible for funding things such as our circus residency, our uh, visiting author, glow party, movie nights, and town meeting lunch, that we can afford to, a really fun night.
Is that adults?
It's adults, yes, okay, yeah, yeah. So any questions? Okay, yeah, and I have um, some hard copies, this is um, Jim. And people need more budget, so.
No, no, I have one.
Oh, I got one, I snuck one and gave it to her.
All right, fantastic, so that, oh, thank you. Yes, for all, and that allows us to move then into old business, and we'll start with a similar update. And Andrew, you reached out today and gave us some additional information, I think you wanna share some information with us.
Yeah, um, yeah, add, guess, try and get some information too.
Fair enough.
Yeah, um, so the report came back on building roofs, other than the gym roof, and those are not going to be um, appropriate for solar with the engineers and all of that. So um, we have switched gears to um, considering um, a solar on a structure that could be a carport or um, or something like that, so um, we're currently, I'm assessing a few different options, there's different, did you get the thing I sent? You didn't get a chance to print that out, right?
Nice.
Okay.
That is, um, I copied everybody on it.
I printed out four copies, so maybe people can share.
Okay.
Um, this is just sort of an overview of what the types of carports that we've been looking at, um, potential. Other one, I hope, um.
I have four of the.
Yeah, um. So essentially, um, there's a couple, there's a few different types with uh, racking systems we can use for carports where cars can actually park. One is a, it's a wooden frame structure, like uh, timber frame. Um, the other one is uh, it's basically steel I-beams, and it's maybe more of the industrial type looking thing, which maybe you'd see as if airport words, or um, you know, large, or something like that. And then there is um, a simpler structure, which is more like what you do for residential ground mount systems. Um, they're basically uh, metal pipes, but less robust than than. And they're generally, uh, people store equipment under there if they want, or they park with, um, and so many companies have them, so you can drive your car in it too, uh, but um, they maybe don't look as um, strong as the others, um, uh, if you back the cars and do some of that. So um, that's what we're looking at, there's different pricing, um, possibly not necessarily cheap. Um, however, in one of the companies we're looking at, actually sources there can be put on. And there's a potential collaboration with us, so we could do the um, groundwork, the footings, putting the footings and actually doing a roof um, on them. And then the timber framing company would actually just do timber framing part of it. So there, you should pause savings there because we wouldn't be able to source another company to do some of this work. We have the equipment ourselves to do it. Um, so those are the three types of systems in there. Um, and I'm working on pricing with that. Um. There's the question of R F P, which has um, you know, this role of doing a hundred percent, or two hundred thousand kilowatt hours. So um, this is generally uh, considered more expensive proposition. So, you know, something has to be a, maybe a smaller system for we can use some new funds naturally appear, so there's, there's gonna be some adjustment there. Going on the roof, you have a cheap garage. So that's just something to think about. The other things to think about are, um, it is a parking lot, but on that um, west side, um, where there's an image here, actually from Google Earth, it shows sort of overflow parking onto the non-paid part. Um, and I don't know what the future plans are for that for that area, but um, potentially that could be, if you didn't wanna do a car park, there's actually parking under there, um, that could be, um, you you wouldn't have to worry about sort of traffic flow, it could just be a fixed system and it's just for, you you could put things on there. Utilities or equipment, things like that, but maybe we need a part.
A a simple ground down. And then, intentionally.
Less of a multi-use.
Correct.
Um, that may potentially be more prospect. Um, so the things to think about here, and I just sort of listed some considerations is, actually, to a parking board. How are the cars gonna enter, exit, um, that's gonna affect sort of power design. Um, snow plowing, so it's a big parking lot, so when we plow, it's getting pushed somewhere, I don't know where that is.
Actually, the dirt. Just to the back, the same right where you're turning, yeah, yeah.
Right, okay, so right now, that's the place where snow goes, so that's just something to consider. Something there where it's snowing. If we need to do something and we have to, you know, you have the asphalt parking lot. Um that's gonna take more work and more care to put footings and things like that. Um so the future of a parking lot, what your plans are there, if there are any. Considerations, that's something to know.
Because the parking lot is a proper break.
There is discussion of um. Rainage, redoing the drainage, re- re- repaving, or it's not even. I think there was discussion, trying to pick that dirt spot and pave it as well. So, oh, it's, it's, it's good to break, like, yes, they're all interconnected and.
Yeah.
One has to function and, and think of the other, because otherwise you're gonna be doing twice as much work.
Right.
Uh we're not being. There's um. There's a question of EV charging, um and. The orientation of where we put the, the system could affect that too, obviously, yeah. You wanna, that probably is a carport situation. When you drive your car in. That's maybe something for the future, but it's just something you might wanna keep in mind. And then another thing I was thinking, I was driving over there, is the lighting, the lighting, so you have those two lamp posts. And if we put something up in the parking lot, uh we still have to figure out how that affects the lighting. So, um. You can see a couple different um arrangements, um. And one is to put the carport um on that dirt plot. Um and really cars can just ride straight in there and drive out. The snow is gonna, gonna fall into the parking area. And there's a second array here facing roughly south. Um you either put that for the roadside, um and the snow would fall. Into the parking lot area where it can be collected, or we could put it um on this side closer um. To where the hedges are. Here, um and it could. Fall off away from the park. So that might take less, that might. I know, so these, these are things to think about with jobs, you know, how so these people are managing. And I think, uh we just need to feel a better sense of um. What is wanted. Want to teach your parking under a carport, is that not a big deal? And obviously, in the future, the parking lot itself is, is are you gonna change the, the way cars park?
Would it also, would it be too far away or unwanted where like the old batting cages, like? So let's, let's back up just a minute, and first of all, uh I want to thank Andrew for reaching out today to offer. To come in and help us um with some of these considerations. I have reached out to Andrew in the last several weeks, worried about our continuous delays, and we'll speak to those for a moment. But he has said thankfully that they're very busy and continue to be happy to work with us. On what's the best solution for us. So I think our goal is still to have a hundred percent or more of our electrical needs covered. That's, and that's what you're trying to do. Now that we know that it's only the gym roof. That can take the solar array in terms of building roofs, that the other roofs had on. So we're with the gym roof, that's it. And in a separate discussion tonight, we have the bids. To redo the gym roof because the roof is about twenty years old. And we made the decision that we would go ahead and re-roof it before we put solar on. Just because it's proven and cost effective to make sure it's a new roof where we invest this additional in the solar. So we, we've delayed Southern Vermont Solar because of the new information that one, it's an old roof. And two, it's been recommended that we get a new roof before we do this, and then we learned that it's the only roof that can handle this. So, so we're in this kind of sequence of delays for a while. But with that then, let's say tonight that we accept one of those for re-roofing. And that the roof is done then by the spring, that's.
Who said that?
By May, right? So, so that would be, so the solar array on the roof can't start until the roof is redone.
Yeah, and one of the considerations there is that, um. The way we do that system, um, cause so there's the roof and then there's potentially this. Um if you're comp, if, if the plan is to do the large thing. The way we would do that roof in terms of the equipment would be different than if. You said, oh, it's not gonna work out, we're just doing. So. So essentially, there's, there's, there's electric panels we can tie into there for that roof, if we're just doing that. If we're doing the larger system, it needs to go into the main um panel here. So, um, that affects the equipment you choose for, for the project. So, um, that's just, it's just, just a little bit, just something to note. Um before we met to one or the other, we need to know a, a long-term plan. Um, cause it could be done in stages, but. To be done right, you know what, what the large. Then it's supposed to work. So that, that's, that makes sense. So, um, yeah, I mean, we can really wait till, um obviously, we have to wait till that roof's done. Um and we'll collect more information on the different potential options for the, for the carport. And I think we're sort of starting again and presenting some, some options too, but if you can think about. That future use case, that would help us come up with a design that really works. Instead of giving you something and saying, oh, it's not gonna work because of this. Yeah. So, um, that's really all I have to say. Just wanna touch base again. See, we are working on it and there are different options. Obviously, we'll try and get as close to what is requested or be as possible. With what we've done. Um I'll just say that. Some of the fluctuating things here are the prices of materials, so steel right now is a. Um gone. It's like what wood is on a floor. So, um traditionally, I would say like the timber frame stuff. It's a more expensive option, but I'm not actually so sure. So, um, those are some of the things I would look into. The other thing is, um the sooner we are confident where we're headed. We could secure some equipment at a price we know, there's no, because solar coasters like this and. Um sometimes the price is really low, it's like, you should buy it now.
You can store it.
Yeah, or, or, or you supply us.
Um a couple of things, but I'm sure you'll all have questions. Liz, have you and Will had a chance to work with them first? Do you have any?
No.
Okay, we haven't. So, but again, we're still at the goal of wanting to get a hundred percent. We're trying to look long-term in terms of our future looking nature.
Okay, sure.
Well, in the face of it, I presume that to go ahead, we want, we want to go a hundred percent. We'll go ahead and get about forty percent from the road, as you estimated earlier. And you're looking to find the other sixty percent in some other structure. Is there any benefit of trying to get a hundred percent for this structure if we get one more again, or is that just gonna be more expensive? Um I would have a.
That's the cheapest option, so that percentage of the revenue is.
I, I also have a question, so I forget, I've noticed in, uh, in most of my courses, that ceiling angle is always about five percent. Um I, I believe that, you know, as you increase the ceiling, the density to ground bring, so you get a lot of. Better with production efficiencies. Is there any reason, if, the freestanding one should be at five degrees or could it be something more like?
Um, the, generally, the ground mounts that we do are, are thirty-five degrees. So that's standard ground mount. For a carport, um, that would make for a really high. Structure, um, and I think there's engineering considerations too, um, so. So, yeah, thirty-five degrees is, is, is optimal for Liz's.
So we're thinking about whether to go around the side of the, the really, I don't know, towards the middle of it. So, but in the middle, it's best to have it flatter because of wall engineering, and the side goes steeper.
Yeah, 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 theoretically. Yeah, I think some of, some of the um design considerations are made by the manufacturers. So, and those may be just, um, that's the cheapest thing for them. So, um, sometimes we're just restrained by what's available.
In the frame of, then I'm gonna just say that.
Yeah, because they send them off to their engineers and they do these calculations and then they have these engineering sets that they go with. So they don't have to keep paying the engineers over no. On, on a commercial scale. So.
So I wonder if we could have a committee, sub, subcommittee, I'd like to ask Margie, I know you and Charlie have been meeting and looking at this. I wonder if you all could commit to meeting with Andrew and with Bill McCann. Uh Liz, if you want.
Yeah.
And just kind of dive into it a little more deeply, what you would recommend, uh and bring back to us.
The necessity technique.
Or consume it. Yeah, I, I do most of my consultations.
I, I would just recommend them trying to put Steve Horton.
Absolutely.
Only because.
Thank you.
He's diving into the parking lot and the, and all those things are. We wanna coordinate all of that work just so that if you all come to some conclusion you want to. Build a two-story solar array that, 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 how does that impact, you know, that. Well, that'll pull back from what it's trying to do, right? So you just wanna be great together.
So it is, there is a, yeah, maybe to, maybe doing the parking lot.
Be that like with the, the factors of like the angle being a factor that. We should think about not putting it in the parking lot at all, because that's like a separate. Other whole can of worms that needs to get sorted out, then maybe we should explore the. Part of the field.
Yeah, like the way back where that we're just, I'm just throwing that.
And we could both not be worrying about where the snow is running off and having to navigate. Parking lots and where things are gonna plow, all those factors. And we would be increasing efficiency with that, a better angle.
Yeah, sure, if you, if you settle on another space, certainly have to. You know, just design there, yeah, um. I will say, while that is not mutated over there.
Yeah.
It's a lot easier to, to put it.
Great buttons.
Yeah, because we use these brown screws, helical brown screws that can just. That is, um, without using concrete floors or anything like that, so it's very fast.
So it's also gonna.
Yeah, it could be cheaper.
Not a gazebo, a pavilion.
There's gonna be what?
A pavilion out there too.
Oh, okay.
You have a roof of the pavilion, yeah.
There you go. Well, yeah.
Any available.
We're sorry, we're sorry.
If you, I'm gonna change your. If you're a beautiful pavilion, that's, that's.
There is, we are building of the building, that's what we're talking about. But I think so, they go together.
We didn't ask the engineer, like, a design on, would it support, like. You know, one thing starts another thing, so that's. It might, yeah. I'm just saying that, and that's something we could ask the look, that would that light carry it.
Sixty pounds, no, it'll be good.
So, so with all of that, you do a great job of coordinating emails, so continue to include Steve Horton and know that you can meet with. Uh Margie and Charlie. Phil, and kind of carrying this forward.
Uh no, whatever.
I'll make sure. His email was in one of the.
Sure.
So, so with that, um.
Yeah.
Let's move into.
I guess I have one question before we leave this.
Sure.
How does, so we put out in our fee, they answered it, we accepted it. But now that's completely shifted and changed and like, you know, are we? What do we have to do? I mean, do we have to do anything? We have to. I don't wanna, I, I, not that I don't want to, I'm just saying, do we have to do, are we obligated to? Or is, are we, can, can we continue to just keep working it until it looks good?
Andy is thinking. We got an official waiver from the state, uh in that we had two out of three bits. We needed, we got a waiver to prove our point forward. Um, you, you know, the conceptual elements of getting a hundred percent of our solar needs met. Um were met by this vendor, uh and um we have a general uh reasonable plan that was proposed. I, I don't know, it's my, certainly my inclination to take the work of the vendor to accommodate our needs.
Yeah, I, I, I think if you, um. Were to say, let's scrap the roof and let's go and put a solar array somewhere, you may have to go out and redo it. Because that's a totally different project. But because you're finding out that originally you wanted it to be on roofs that is. Structurally cannot handle unless you've dealt a lot of money at home. If you're, you're adjusting, you're, so I think you're okay. I could, I definitely could get. Some advice on that if you'd like.
And the original of the proposal from both of the vendors, uh included a possible parking lot away.
Yeah.
Uh you did start with the gym, you looked at that in roofs, but you lost it in your original proposal. So where, where was the end and our original?
That's right, I, I, what I included was. Here's some, there's potential.
Correct, that's what you said, that's right.
And that's good.
Without going to.
So far, so good, I think you're in a position.
Like I said, like if you were gonna totally change the, the, the intent of the project. I think the spirit would be to go back out, like you, you are not changing the intent, you're reacting to the problem.
So may I ask a question? If, if this was put out in the field. It has to be connected to. Here, so I'm just saying, the, the conduit is longer from the field than it would be closer by. And I don't know of what that means in terms of, you know, thinking about the cost and so forth. It's made out of steel, it's still the thing, I don't know the, you know, though.
Once we create more problem.
No, no, I'm only wanting to say that that's something we have to consider, it's not like not wanting to do it.
Well, we'll, we, we'll choose that map.
Sure, sure.
So the, the distance is, um, how far is the?
Behind the gym or, or next to the gym.
Yeah, so that can be done, um, the, the distances, that's a lot more excavation.
Yeah, yes.
Things like that, but, you know, we'll. We'll press that.
Yeah, no, that's great. I just was, you know, I wanted to. Remind us all that the farther away we go, the longer the conduit is, that's just something that's on. Um and it's fine, and I've been doing a lot, because that's not a problem, just it was efficient. Yes, true.
I kind of this emotional recommend that we actually get a ruling on this question, I I think it makes, sounds like it makes perfect sense that S V A should, we should roll over. But so that we don't get any surprises down the line. And we do nothing, that what you couldn't be bothered with.
I think we need to have, we ask for, we don't know what we're asking for, you know, what are we really, aren't you making, um, together to have?
No, no, but the idea is, okay, it's, I don't need a moat, I mean, if if you like me to just ask our attorney, yeah, just I I can do that, and it is, it's a quickie.
Good, I mean, that's behind us, then we know that we're working with you.
I also have one more question, kind of tangentially, sorry. Do we have any concern, like, when Charlie and I read over the the uh, engineer's report, it basically is saying that the roof can't hold drifting snow. Which to me sounded
German.
No, no, like, that's right, all the roofs, other than the gym, is the, I was like, oh, that's funny to live inside for a month. Like, I mean, are we concerned about that at all? No. Yes. Is that fine? Are we, like, like, that was
right, we have a whole new roof on this side, but there are places on the roof that we have to replace. Okay, like, there's a place, um, near the gym that we'll need to. Yeah, so it's not yeah, there's something.
Like, not only did we find out that we can't put the solar panels there, but we also found out that there's some structural integrity missing.
Yeah.
So, so, so I think with the drifting snow, you're talking about, wait, if if we got a lot of snow one time or the snow was moving a lot, you'd want to get a foot up there. We do it, but we do it at the high school and another building, it's just, it's a known, like, you you're not, you're not going to be snow on your roof, like like you saw, like, you know, in Mammoth, California.
Yeah, yeah, I I.
We get snow like. I don't think that's gonna happen.
That's it, that's all.
That's great, it it's not a new problem.
Yeah, no, I think the information just was.
Okay, with that, let's, the next topic will be the gym roof and the bids. So Andrew, you're welcome to stay, I think it's your time, it's up for tonight.
Yeah, thank you too.
Yes, thank you.
Um, and I did say I would bring the contract, but, um, Simon said we need to reel that up based on what potentially about.
All right. All right, thank you so much. Thanks for staying in touch, you're doing a great job. All right, um, gym roof bids, you know that Steve Horton, our owner representative, uh, had helped us with that entire process of getting bids, he then said that the bids that we got were inadequate, he asked for revised bids, we got those, and we've been sent those. And then Steve Horton made a recommendation, so what's your plan here?
I know that we accept the recommendation for J J Universal.
Motion or just third call?
No, like, I made a motion.
Um. Do you want to put in the numbers?
Yeah, for one hundred twelve thousand, three hundred nine dollars and twenty cents, plus the, plus the snow guards for an additional thirty five thousand. And he is also looking into a twenty-year warrant.
He looked into it, it's fine.
Okay, great, yeah, you got that, you're right. So, do you want the total?
Uh.
One hundred forty seven thousand, three hundred ninety dollars and twenty cents.
Okay, and Nicole, you've got that, there's a motion on the floor uh, to accept the recommendation of the owner's representative, I'd say we don't even put that in the motion, but I will just say as context, it was recommended to us by our representative panel for all of this, so the motion on the floor is to accept the proposal from J J J J Universal, J J Universal, um, to repair the gym roof. Re-roofed the gym, I should say, with insulation and and a snow guard for a total amount of one forty seven thousand, three hundred nine.
I love the terms.
Yeah, yeah. So any, any, there's a motion on the floor or any discussion?
I know we're gonna be here all night, but I just wanted to we're putting in insulation, so that's gonna make the snow stay on the roof. And so that's why they're saying we need the snow guards to hold it back, so that it doesn't slide off. There's hardly any angle on the roof anyway. I, it's really actually very hard for me to wrap my head around the fact that snow guards are thirty five thousand dollars. That's crazy, you guys, these are little fins that, like, it it would take one day to put the in, that is huge. I mean, you know what, snowbirds, right?
Yeah, but there are a lot of them that are going to be needed on the roof after the snow and solar panels, this is what I'm reading, but after the sun, you know, the solar panels would put on, right?
I can see it, like, they have, you know, they have pictures of them, it's just a huge amount of money for snowbirds on that, shocks me.
And it's a, it's gonna be a shingle roof, too.
The snowbird should not be that much money.
No, but isn't that, uh, my name's the roof was metal or she was.
No, this is a funny thing, isn't it, for for this roof? It's an answer.
I mean, you could ask, you don't want to, if you feel like you need to ask Steve, you know, why, but I get the roof being a hundred thousand dollars, under ten, whatever, one hundred. That that makes sense, but thirty five thousand bucks is a lot of money for snowbirds.
Well, how big is the gym roof?
My roof, it's not like my roof, it's not.
It is big, but I've never actually seen a snow dump come up with it.
Because the angles hardly anything.
It's like, well, and you just don't get big snow dumps off of anything except for metal roofs.
Exactly, I actually don't think we need snowbirds, and and Steve says says that somewhere in one of these. Do you agree that you want to proceed with the snowbirds, if at all, and I guess I moved to be, I don't think we need snowbird.
So what if you like to amend?
Amen, but yeah, amend my motion to.
Does anybody think we should, or, I mean, does anybody?
Well, what we could do, if you amended the motion, is to re-roof it at one twelve, three oh nine, twenty, and then have further research about the need for snowbirds, that's no question, yeah.
Say they'd be put on later, if they're, then definitely really happy to have them.
It it says here, right, assuming with the warranty they have checks out, under the one with the snow guard. The cost of the snow guards may either be a solar project-related cost or a roof-related cost. So we, so I think it depends on where the monies are coming from, and, I mean, if they're coming from Universal because they're, you know, J J, whatever, it's like Universal. Um, I mean, I'm happy if you feel like we need to check about the snow guards, I just, uh, and since Andy Janowitz is saying thirty five thousand for them, and they're saying, plus, you know what I mean, it's interesting to me.
But my my only thought in this is if you ended up needing snow guards, will you end up spending more than thirty thousand or thirty five thousand dollars later?
Yeah, well, wait.
So, so that that's, I don't know, um, and I also know very much you want to move forward with your projects, so I I don't want to, I don't want to say to you, hey, let me go back and ask, because he's not here to act.
Which way are the, I mean, I think it has to do with the solar panels as well. In other words, solar panels are going to accumulate snow at a certain angle.
They're gonna pitch that.
That's going to pitch that way, right?
Well, they're gonna look for this.
That way, right?
So I think, I mean, they're not pitched on the roof. Right?
But they're they're flat to the roof, so.
They're flat to the roof, they're they're the same pitch of the roof, which is five percent.
You're gonna have snow falling towards the playground.
Yeah.
More or so.
I'm only wanting to say is that the more surface, I I I don't, I don't know how the solar panels are, how they're gonna work, do you know what I mean?
They they are, they would need snowbirds, the the snow would like bang up against them. We don't need snowbirds on the edge.
Well, if if you're hot to trot on this, I will say, let's, let's just accept the first and and have them, you know, question the second, I I I. Liz has a comment?
I just was in Steve Horton's report, it just says that, uh, they're installing solar panels on the south gym roof will most likely require snowbirds. Um, and I'm just wondering if we bought snowguards after, would we have to, like, have an R F P, go out to bid, buy rebids, buy a bid waiver, you know, I'm just thinking about that.
Yeah, like, yeah, the only, if it's over forty thousand dollars, yes.
Right.
I would only imagine that once they're up there, cheaper for them while they're up there to install and then come back later, they don't bring equipment, so that's gonna increase your costs. I profess, I don't know, I I mean, I I, that's why I've relied on Steve and his.
What he also did was assuming the warranty they have checks out, and he just didn't.
There's a picture I just looked at, there's these other things, is that all it is?
That's what it is.
Are they covering the entire roof or just here?
The edge.
No, I think so, no, they cover, they cover more than that.
I'm looking them up right now.
They cover more than just the edge.
They go up a little bit, but like, that is the, they like stagger, if they're not at the top roof, they're to arrest the movement. But they're also snowbirds, but they're also ice guards. Very funny, they cut the ice, in other words, snow guards are for the roof and it could be ice as well. So it cuts it off as opposed to sheets of ice coming down, where I mean, it's ice and snow, those guards, I I I.
The roof is next to boring, it's boring, this, you guys, we're not.
Do you want to know if there's insurance reasons, like, at a school, why they're, because if he says we might have to have snowbirds, if we have panels installed, then we're not going to insure.
We probably have to.
Right, right.
All right, let's just do it, forget what I said.
There's a motion on the floor, which is for the four about the one forty seven, three oh nine, uh, twenty, twenty cents.
All right, I said, I said.
Charlie already did.
All right, so, so I think there's been a request to call for a vote, so all of those in favor of this motion to accept the bid from J J Universal, uh, and the total amount of one forty seven, three oh nine, twenty, that does include snowbirds, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, pass. Thanks. And, uh, this comes from the voter approved capital improvement letters, that's where the source of this will be, and it's still fits within the same budget line that so actually, this is Steve's question, for us, it's the same question. Okay. All right, so that's that, the next, um, item on the agenda is for the events, and we actually did get three bids. For a pivot, and Steve does have a recommendation there. Um, now that there were three.
Should I accuse myself of one of the, one of the vendors as a friend? We have not talked about the pavilion at all.
That, so refusal is the best advice I've been given by them, like, if you think you should.
I'm not really, um.
I mean, if you're, if you're asking, if you're asking the question, maybe you should, but that's a decision you have to make.
I'm not concerned.
So.
Carol?
Yes.
I thought batteries just died, so I thought that the, but whatever, Paul, like, one of them talked about siding, and I was surprised that we were having siding on this thing. It was a, it was a cost item, the siding on one of the three.
Because of rain and stuff.
That it always pays for siding on this thing?
No.
I didn't think so, second thing is, one of them had a bidding room, but the other had a a shingle.
Correct.
Um, but and 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 the one that Steve recommended of metal roof, the one he didn't, that she wrote.
That's great.
I I I, can we make some match, can we ask him to put a a shingle roof on the one that we accept, on the one that he's recommended? Um, why would you?
Metal roofs are much longer lasting.
It's also gonna be fun around there, uh, uh, in summer. I mean, we can.
Metal roofs, I.
I don't think they would want, that's who I'm so sure, if it was, if there was siding, like.
Yeah.
Well, okay, I mean, just for sad reason.
You know, when they have metal roofs, they have, sometimes they're, and sometimes there are color that you want.
I I mean, I think, I think color-wise, you.
You can choose.
I don't know, the proposal says it had to be a specific color.
I think, I think, so it is probably like metal roofs, it's fine, but siding, then we can take the that, the cost, the full cost of that, they have included the cost of something called siding, so the actual cost is gonna be less when they go away.
Then the one who says, building siding, I don't remember.
No, that doesn't, okay, and so, so that.
One that is, I'm trying to decide.
Which one?
As I say, my, oh, sorry. The one that we said to, I'm pretty sure, or one of them, that's either one. If you look at the cost break.
So while you look at that, I mean, as a question of Liz, uh, the proposals from. Can you keep weight down a little bit as you look, and so we can have continued discussion. I was just wondering if you've been more pointed, look for what you're looking for. That's all. So this size is bigger than you all, I wondered if you have talked about that staff.
Yeah, I did, I talked about it with a small group of staff, they were concerned about the larger one proposed by Bensonwood, that just would seem very large.
It's the one from Sunset Builders, which is twenty-two by twenty-two.
Oh, yeah, the same, they were the same, and so we were both, um, oh, twenty-two by twenty-two, one was twenty-four. Or he said he was also twenty-four by twenty-four, and Sunset was twenty-two by twenty-two.
Okay, um, I think they were confused that they were going to be really big and seem out of place. Because it was such a large structure.
The team that I discussed this with was actually more interested in the ten livers proposal than the Bensonwood or the Sunset Lake Builders proposal, in that it talked more about kind of meshing in with the aesthetic of our space and our building, talked more about, uh, which kind of matched our vision of having the pavilion be linked into the greenhouse, in extension of our garden, really. Um, they liked the thought of the epoxy slab, the concrete slab with the epoxy coating over it, and they thought it, um, the talk about the drainage in that proposal to make, uh, they feel like it was needing our needs.
And we charge you for a living roof.
Right, which was also really exciting, um, so it just felt some more, less of a canned pavilion that might seem um, you know, beautiful, of course, all of these are gonna be gorgeous, but seem kind of out of place in the space that we're in.
So which one, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm just working with this.
Yeah, and talking about not to. Yeah, that's what the one that they were.
Their preferences for chimps, at this point, it's smaller, it has more features, it's not acceptable to Steve Horton in its current form. Uh, it was a range of prices, it's a specific, uh, value, so he couldn't assess it in that way. I think, uh, it sounds to me like we should actually, uh, not make a decision on it tonight, and that we should get a little more detail from the teachers, if we wanted to, I think, we'd get some guidance from Steve, but if we wanted to ask, uh, the third vendor to come in with a specific price, not a range, then we could evaluate it, what would be the two?
It is, he does say in his proposal that with a class size of fifteen and twenty students, with teachers, that's that's smaller size will feel great.
Right. I personally think a bigger one is better, but I understand that some of the current concern on the part of the teachers, um, I I just see so many of them where they're stretched in, and you get, uh, a little more latitude with more space, a little more skill. So I personally was comfortable with twenty-two with them.
So, for clarification, so you're asking, um, if the third vendor, um, let's say third, this is third on my list, uh, looking at, um, in, give you a solid price to arrange.
Correct.
And what else, um?
Or what, or different sizes? I I.
Is there another, other, anything else you want to evaluate by, um, any other information you wanted back from Steve, I'm, that's what I. any other information you wanted back from Steve? I'm, that's what I, I'm gonna ask Steve to contact the builder.
I guess Steve will contact the builder.
That's what I was gonna, you know, that.
That's probably the right, sure, let you go. Oh, I would wonder if the teachers would, and maybe they've done this, would go outside and walk it. And actually see what it, what it feels like.
Yeah.
Because I know it's because they're going to need beams, um, you know, no, and trying to take some of that squeeze, if you know.
Liz, Liz, if I can write, that might be good if you got a couple of, you know, long stakes and some, like, some, you know, just orange, like, big ribbon or something, tape off, what, like, so that they could actually see what that would feel.
Interior. And I think it's pretty high, it's tall.
Yeah.
Um, and I think that really just, um, not looking for ambition. It's like a large structure, so.
No, I, I get it. I'm, I'm just like, as, as Cheryl's saying, like, if you, if you're thinking, you know, like, if it's sixteen by twenty-four, you'd wanna come in probably a foot because you're gonna have posts and beams to come in a little bit. And then feel what that like is to have fifteen kids out there or twenty kids. Like, is it gonna feel tight? Or are you gonna wanna be able to do more?
Right.
Just so you, your teachers have a feel of the size. I think that's a good recommendation.
And also, then, sorry, just things to do. The Sunset Builders, as I say, they included this line of trim and siding materials and later. So presumably they should adjust their bid.
Well, I, I don't, I don't, I read that. I don't read that as siding, like siding of a house. Or nothing more. I, I think it's like some trim siding that would go around the top, but I can verify that. I don't think it's like
Stop fitting.
Like, like, I don't, I don't, like, siding of, of a structure that size would cost more than, more than fifty-six hundred bucks.
I don't go there.
I, I just, I think I, I'm just trying to like
No, no, I don't think they need siding.
Yeah, I, but I can, I can clarify.
So, so in part, this started because the teacher said they needed a little more shelf.
Yeah. Right. And I think they were just wanting to be sure that they didn't seem like a, a large structure out of place in our, in our, in our house, so we, um. But I will definitely walk out and stop again, and we'll discuss, and then when we have specifics from the third vendor. We can revisit.
And then part of it is also, sounds like, and I think this is wonderful, the teachers wanna make sure that this is compatible with what's already going on out there.
Yeah.
Kind of all fits together. We didn't really say that in our, in our request proposal.
Yeah. I think they were more interested in, uh, the, also the, the third vendor came and, uh, talked with the, um, staff member and just kind of took he wanted to see space, like where it would look for the proposal. And when he was describing, I think he was talking about right now, oh, I would think that looking at the landscape, this type of roof would swell with the terrace roof, how our roof is in our building, and then what it would look like aesthetically. And that was interesting for my sound to hear.
Okay, so that gets into a little bit of personal conversation there. I think if we go back to Steve, simply asking him to give us a firm bid or on solid ground to evaluate our proposals without getting any more personality.
Yeah.
But do have the teachers go out and really visualize it.
Yeah.
And then bring it back just.
Okay.
Cause I also think that thinking about the things that keeping the roof up, you know what I mean? And then if they're, oh, if they're smaller, so that they're like this.
Right.
And if, no, I've seen different, that's something I'm gonna go through. I mean, the other thing I was thinking about was you know, if you wanna be able to use it in the rain or
Yeah.
Then you could, you might need to, uh,
Yeah.
Do you know what I mean?
Right, yeah.
So the windows are floating somehow. You want some, a little bit of space to be able to think about doing that, but someone
Yeah.
All right, Marjorie.
One other difference in the bids is that true of them have concrete pads, pads and the, the one that also is just pea gravel.
Right.
So.
I was initially thinking of, uh, some of us, yeah.
So, uh, they were talking about
I bet the RFP, asked first.
We did, yeah. Just, but one of the bids did not have that, just
They could also, if they wanted to, they could ask one of your staff members for pictures of Steve Horton, who like her.
Yeah.
It's, he does really beautiful, but
Yes. I mean, there wasn't any denial that any of these weren't going to be gorgeous, right? They were all gonna be gorgeous.
For clarification, if, if they added two thousand dollars for a concrete slab on that proposal.
Okay. I, I, I just have one thing I'm thinking about with projects like this that I'm noticing. I wonder if we should decide, or like you decided, what is, like, what we want? We draw it out, or we have somebody draw it out, and then we ask people to bid on what we've drawn. Instead of, because I feel like at times like this, we're comparing apples to oranges. And it's, and then we ask Steve and he's like, yeah, I'll give you a little spreadsheet that tells you, but you're, it's still apples to oranges. Whereas if we have a drawing, if we have a drawing, and then we ask people to bid on that drawing, and the, these specifications, we're comparing apples to apples. It seems like a more efficient way to do it than do this.
So, so with all due respect, that's the point of an RFP is to, you want to write your RFP as specific for what you want. So you don't give them a drawing, you write the, the RFP, we want a living roof, we want blah, 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 blah. And then they're supposed to bid on what you specifically want. So if you wrote your thing, we want a pavilion that's this size, with, you know, you didn't specify what type of roofing material, you didn't, so then that's why bidders are gonna come back. You can always go back to bidders and say, we want X. And they can come back and they can tell you, go pick rocks, or here's our new proposal. So you, that is the bidding process, but what you want, when you write an RFP, you wanna be as specific of what you want to, to do that. And we've done that on other things, and we've had bidders never bid on certain things because we're so it's a fine line. You can get so specific, no one will bid, or you can get, and, and that's where, again, it even gets into these concerns of, you know, I got a friend who can draw this up for me, and then my friend can bid on it. So he draws it so, and he can bid on it. So that's, that's where you just always have to go. I don't, well. Yeah.
One other point is that we give, we accept a bid to build the structure basically that we want a certain size with certain, uh, dimensions to it. Once that's done, then there's still room for the client to talk with the vendor and personalize it. We have that, we'll be even more reflect what we like to see here. There's still room for that creativity.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, because
Creativity may adjust your cost, your overall cost, up or down.
That's right.
But
But we have the latitude to do that at this point, I would say.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, are we good?
Yeah.
I do wanna make sure, are you, would you, and now, with all the money, did you wanna ride? I thought so, I'm sorry, we kept you so long, but thank you for staying, since it's all financially related. I appreciate you.
I do want to make sure in the pavilion process that the teachers get the, like, the learning space that they envisioned.
Yeah.
Or so that, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, yeah. But I do think that the sense of putting stakes out and, you know, getting a, if you I think that, at least for me, visuals like that.
Right.
And if they say they really do wanna, you know, intimate, they don't want it too tall, just bring it back, it's fine, I'll bring that.
Bring that short.
There was nothing in our, our P about the height.
Yeah.
It was I'm gonna do kids out there. All right, with, with all of that, I think we're, uh, so to be continued, the pavilion did discussions. Uh, have we forgotten anything? Was there any things around?
Oh, yes.
The policies. Yeah, a lot of it. Yeah, thank you. So we have, uh, two policies. Uh, one D twenty-two selection library materials and the other uh, D twenty-three selection of construction materials. Uh, they, they have been passed by the policy committee and brought to our attention with that right.
I had my feet agreed for a while, so I don't know.
Okay, they have, okay.
I haven't listened to, well, I haven't listened to this.
Yeah, well, okay. Well, so we can have these two, uh, policies for our consideration and entertain a motion to approve them.
Aye, so.
Okay. Motion to approve, uh, these new policies, D twenty-two and D twenty. Any discussion? Well, really, I'm speaking in general terms about the diversity of, uh, library internal, but I didn't start on internal. Seemed fine to me.
Yeah.
I just have a question I haven't read. This, this doesn't deal with the issue we've questioned, we, we wrote earlier about exclusion of books. That, am I correct? This does not deal with that.
It does not exclude any. It's pretty open about it, so.
We had talked about a policy for how books are included or excluded from the library uh, by parent request or whatever. So this is not, this is not dealing with that.
Correct.
But anything?
No, in fact, one of the lines is the freedom to read is essential in our democracy. That's right.
Right. We had discussed, but it might have to be a policy, uh, for liberal or inclusion of books.
This is not that.
Yeah. Right, there is a separate policy if a parent has a concern how they can go about bringing that to the board for consideration.
But this is an affirmation that would bother, you know, bother. So, Karen made the motion. Uh, any discussion? All right, all those in favor, simply signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Nicole, the record unanimous. All right. Um, I have one other item that would have been under old and unfinished. Uh, actually ties to the principles report, but at our last meeting, we talked about the values, the mission. I think that in our next meeting, maybe bring back, um, things from the discretionary leadership team and kind of core values that you are working with here, so that we can revise, update and reaffirm, uh, mission and goals.
Great, and our patients today, if you ask.
Yeah, we do. So let's move to the director's comments. So we'll start with Margie.
Spot, um, I'm so looking forward to the harvest meal.
Yeah.
That's gonna be super fun.
Okay.
Uh, it seems like the library has just like blossomed with tons of new books, which is really cool.
Yeah.
Um, yours seems to be going really well.
Good, thank you.
Yeah.
I mean, I am coming to harvest meal tomorrow.
Right.
Uh, that's what happened with the water, actually. Um, that's a meeting. No, well, I think, uh, to be said, we could, we did, we did good work tonight, but lots of things hanging out there. I think, I think we settled, we would be, no, pretty much. Just we had one thing there.
Yeah.
Uh, that's good. Um,
Well, thank you. I'm sorry that I have to, it's the harvest meal, because I have to see friends that are not feeling very well, so they have plans to do that. So, you'll fill me in.
Yes.
I'm sure. I'm thinking about the trivia, if they had a team.
I would love to go to the trivia. Anybody else wants to be on my team?
I would too.
Yeah. We gotta be babysitting, well, someone who's not helpful at all.
Yeah, I'm not.
Team, any comments?
Also looking forward to the harvest meal.
Yeah.
It's gonna be great.
Yeah.
Um, everyone's good. Heard a lot about filler part, milk program. It's sounding like it's going great.
Yeah, yeah, that is.
Yeah, the kids love it.
Much this year.
Yep.
Yeah. Oh, I have one last thing. There was the dentist that came.
Yeah.
So very cool to have that at the school. They clean all the kids' teeth, you guys. Here.
Great, yeah.
Well, sorry, I didn't mention that.
I think that's what we're done.
So I'll add that I'm gonna come with the little family tomorrow too, and I'm forward to this, to being here. One thing I'd like to have us think about, um, when we're in budget season, we have a surplus that's come to us from the W N issue, that's close to about three hundred thousand dollars. We should figure out what you recommend to the voters to do. By December one, we should have, uh, an indication of whether there's any surplus for us to propose to the voters to, from this year twenty-three. So I would like us to revisit the capital improvements chart. You know, we're talking about needing to upgrade the bathrooms here, and we're talking about the parking lot. I don't know who's gonna pay for that. And it's just a matter of looking at all of our numbers and trying to figure out where we need to make investments, particularly if we have any surplus.
Yeah.
We can do them. And let's do that as a part of our special meeting to round this budget. Don't you think? I think I'm gonna, we have a sense of any aspects of the budget. Now, maybe, maybe somebody know, could just take a look, not, not of the model, anything, but get sort of a range, sort of a budget. Needing that.
Yeah.
So, so with that, I think we're about to close the meeting with any comments from the director, just our superintendent, and her patient.
No, I'm hopeful that you may be here tomorrow. That's, uh, it's on my calendar. We'll see how the, uh, where other needs might be, but, uh, looking forward to it. It's exciting to, um, just work with all of you and the projects and the devotion to your students. Thank you.
Great. Okay, meeting adjourned at seven forty-seven.
This meeting was recorded by Falls Area Community Television, located at One Hospital Court, Bellows Falls, Vermont. If you would like a copy of the meeting, our phone number is eight zero two four six three one six one three. Or email us at fact eight ten at gmail dot com. Falls Area Community TV, keeping government honest.